Good evening and welcome. Sorry for the delay here. I am the chairman, Scott Lambert, and I would like to call to order the September 13, 2022 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce our attendees here, at the main table and side table. On my immediate right is Vice Chairman Rich Orillo, and next to Rich is our Solicitor, Bernadette Kearney. On my left is Township Manager John Nagel, and sequestered in the table down there is Supervisor Peter Fixler. Next month's meeting will return to the normal second Wednesday of the month's schedule. Some decorum points I would like to make out to everyone's attention is that the meeting is being recorded. Residents will have the opportunity to comment after each agenda item, after it has been discussed by the staff and the board, and any topics not on the agenda can be brought up for three minutes during the public comment section under number nine. As always, upon joining the meeting, please introduce yourself and provide your address before you speak. We appreciate that. Tonight, we begin by mourning the loss of Joe McGory, who passed away on August 16th. Joe was not only our Solicitor since 2016, but a beloved member of the East Whiteland Township family. On behalf of the township, our heartfelt sympathies go out to Joe's wife, Ellen, who is here in the building with us, and their sons, Joseph III, Daniel, and Matthew, and to Joe's entire family. Let us stand and have a moment of silence for this great man. Joe worked closely and extensively with a lot of our staff, our residents, and associates of the township, so he felt it fitting tonight to invite you to tell the Joe story or provide any comments that you would like to add. And so I will start off, and then I'll ask John and anyone else at the table, and Peter.
I met Joe in 2018 as I began to crash course, as he began to crash course me on the Pennsylvania municipal maze of codes and regulations associated with this particular position. I remember saying to him, "I've been in healthcare for 35 years," and I didn't think things could get more complicated. He just gave me that big Joe smile of his, that's all he said. His professionalism and wealth of knowledge on the law was impressive, and his answers were always simple and precise. And boy, could that man command a room with very few words. He definitely looked out for the township's interests, but also tried to be fair to all parties involved. While he retired in April on new issues here for the township, we were happy that we were able to get Joe to come back out of retirement to help manage four complicated and nearing completed projects. His final project was helping Bernadette and the township work through the Route 202 billboard landscaping issues. And oh, by the way, Joe, we received a check for $161,000 on Monday from Catalyst. Thank you.
John?
Let me turn my mic on. Joe's reputation preceded his arrival here. We were both peers, to some degree, in Montgomery County. I knew of Joe's reputation as the zoning guy from Hamburg Rubin. A lot of my staff had attended his workshops that he conducted pro bono every month. We were in the business for about the same amount of time, and I closely worked with Steve and Bernadette's firm for over 10 years when they were selected as Solicitor of Montgomery Township. But it wasn't until Joe was hired here in East Whiteland in 2016 that I got to work with him firsthand. As was stated-- Joe arrived, blew up three times in 18 months, and Joe was new to Chester County and was new to the six other sources from Chester County municipalities that were part of that, but he commanded a room of attorneys on subject matters that had the highest degree of complexity. He always reduced the subject for anyone to understand. Joe's stories are too numerous to count, but were legendary. Personally, Joe helped me through many complex issues with a variety of different subject matters. I also had the pleasure of dining with Joe before board meetings on meeting nights, and he loved Italian food. The last time I saw John was similar to Scott's, or Scott saw Joe was similar to Scott's recollection, was a recent Friday afternoon. He had just finished the Catalyst meeting, but took the time to knock on my door and say hello. He was dressed in a golf shirt and shorts. When I opened the door, or he opened the door, I told Joe he looked like twins. He was so happy, so refreshed, and bragged about getting better sleep. Like many of us, Joe has left an indelible mark on our memories. And my parting comment is that one good person like Joe can touch so many more hearts than we'll ever know. He will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Rich?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, John. First, I want to thank Joe's family for letting him out every night.[521.41][521.41](laughter) It was every night, he tells us, three, four nights a week. That couldn't have been easy. I felt a special relationship with Joe as a fellow attorney. Not only did he represent our interests here, but I was often before him at other townships and always was treated fairly and firmly and objectively, just like the guy he was. So, we thank you, and we miss you, Joe.
Bernadette?
As Scott was saying, Joe was a wealth of knowledge and was happy to share it with everyone. I remember when Peter and I met with him, and, but in addition to being knowledgeable, Joe was very practical as to the application of the law, and that's what he was explaining to Peter and I, I think for like two to three hours one day, just to understand municipal zoning, land development, and all that goes on with running a township. So many people have said that to me since Joe passed, that Joe got things done. And on a personal note, Joe and I would often be at the firm on weekends, and we would talk, and Joe has a very, very wry sense of humor, and he would make me laugh. And the outfits he would wear, I still picture this one tie-dyed outfit that I couldn't believe, Eileen, you let him out of the house looking like that, but that was Joe. And he truly will be missed, and he has touched a lot of attorneys in our office and other offices because he shared his knowledge, and he was so happy to do that and always willing to talk to you. So, there are a lot of attorneys out there who practice municipal law because Joe McGory taught them that. And we do thank you, Eileen, for letting him go out. I couldn't tell you, I think he said on his, the website, he was out at least 2,000, he had done at least 2,000 hearings, and I believe that.
Hello, I'm Peter Fixler, the newest supervisor. First of all, my deepest condolences to the McGory family. Before being a supervisor on the Planning Commission, I knew Joe through that, and as Bernadette stated once I became a supervisor, got even more schooling from him because I had a little more of his attention. My deepest lasting impression of Joe is he was just a true bulldog fighter for the interests of the township. He was tireless in his pursuits to help the township out and just better all of us through his interactions, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you. So unlike John, I did not know Joe before coming to East Whiteland. I met him during my interview, and I quickly realized that I was, he was sort of a force to be reckoned with. He kind of grilled me during my interview, nothing too aggressive or anything. It was all in good sport and, I think, trying to drill into what I knew and what I didn't know, and certainly I realized quickly thereafter it was more the latter, but I remember him throwing out some scenarios to me, and for one of them, I remember giving three answers, and the last was sort of a, you know, if all else fails, I guess you could do this, and it turned out that that was the right answer in Joe's mind, so I, and that was pretty obvious. I blushed and just tried to move on, but I think like a lot of people, I viewed Joe as a bit of a mentor and learned a lot from him, not just on things related to land development and the things that I do in a professional matter, but sort of how to handle yourself in a meeting, how to represent your board, but I would say most importantly, the importance of sort of managing and maintaining relationships and how important that is to trying to get things done, which he was very good at, so.
My condolences to Joe's family and his colleagues and friends as well. I only got to know Joe professionally, and so I'll speak mostly about that, but I've worked a long time in local government, and I've worked with a lot of attorneys, and I've never met an attorney like Joe, and I mean that in a good way. Not only, you know, was his knowledge unsurpassed, but as a couple other folks have spoken this evening, his ability to distill complex subjects and complex situations and get to the point and make it understandable to really anyone is invaluable in municipal government when you're dealing with so many subjects. And his wit and his firm hand, again, just unsurpassed, and his professionalism, and yeah, he really will be missed, and we miss him, and I miss him already.
I had a very brief encounter with Joe, but every time I saw him and I had talked with him on a personal level, and he seemed, he seemed to me very relatable, respectful, as serious as he looked, but I found him very funny for some reason. So, anything he said, he made me laugh, so I missed that. And when he was not here, I always asked Donna, "Where is Joe?" And even though I had nothing to do with job-wise or anything, but, you know, if he was not here, he was missed. So, I missed that part, not seeing him.
If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come up and head to the gauntlet there.
It's been a minute. I am Carla Zambelli-Moudry. I live on Tom's Circle. I knew who Joe was before I moved to East Whiteland because my old state rep, Tim Briggs, used to work for him. I didn't know him personally, only as a resident of East Whiteland Township, and I didn't always agree with some of what he said, but that is pretty much the definition of me, and I don't agree on everything with everyone anyway. I used to laugh at meet-- oh, your eyebrows are up. I used to laugh at meetings because one of the biggest bones of contention that residents, because they didn't understand how municipal process actually worked, they would get angry when he said he was there to represent the township. And they were like, "No, you're supposed to represent us," and he's like, "No, a Solicitor works for the township." And it would go back and forth, and he was pretty calm about that. I don't think I could have been as calm about that. He was a nice guy underneath that gruff exterior, and he put up with me, and that's saying a lot. Towards the end of his tenure here with this township, I thought he was very brave. You could see he wasn't feeling well, and he showed up and did his job, and you cannot say that about a lot of people today. He had a strong work ethic and sense of duty, and I respect that. In addition, not all solicitors will speak to residents, and he actually did. His predecessor did not. He was also the Solicitor in other communities where I had friends for many years, including West Vincent Township and Upper Marion Township. I will note that he saw West Vincent through a rather unpleasant tumultuous transition politically, and then, of course, as is the nature of things, as he was leaving, the same circle was happening all over again, which is a shame because he did so much work there. I am truly sorry, and I extend my condolences first to the family and to the staff and supervisors of East Whiteland Township and his other colleagues, coworkers, and the rest of his family, and it was nice to see all of you guys. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
I am John Matei. I'm the new zoning officer for the municipality. I was lucky enough to know Joe since my days as the zoning officer in Upper Marion Township. Joe was one of my first solicitors there. We spent many nights learning, discussing. My chairman was another attorney that Joe worked with, Sal Bello, and so we had a very good rapport, and I learned a lot from Joe, and I was blessed enough to have mentioned his name, I believe, in my interviews a couple months ago, and not knowing that Joe was a associate here with the municipality, I guess I should have done my homework sooner. But I appreciate everything Joe done through my life. I know he affected a lot of people, and Eileen, I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you.
I'm Steve Lupin. I'm a partner of Joe's, partner of Bernadette's, and I'm going to give you a little different view maybe of Joe. Joe McGory was the biggest, toughest, and gentlest person I have ever known. As you know, in recent years, Joe suffered from a variety of serious medical illnesses. Joe was tough and never let his medical conditions get in his way, or for that matter, let it get him down. I would check on Joe before his medical procedures and after those procedures. Not knowing exactly when he would be in the office, I would check his office from time to time, and I would miss him. However, when Joe came into the office, whether he had an operation on his foot, a cardiac procedure, or even on crutches or on a walker, he would rumble across the office to visit me and report on his medical condition. Every time, I would tell him to buzz me the next time, and I would gladly walk to his office. He refused. Upon arrival in my office, he would explain in great detail a medical procedure that he was preparing to have or just had, as if he was a doctor, just passionately detailing the procedure to a distant patient. Later, he would update me on his recovery. He would never, ever complain. He was tough in so many ways. He was repeatedly absent from work for a period of time due to medical procedures. Each time, he halved, halved the prescribed time off and returned to the office as promptly as humanly possible. He was motivated by his responsibilities and love for his family, his wife, Eileen, and his three sons, Joe III, Daniel, and Matthew, and his devotion to his law firm, and especially his devotion to his clients. He was a consummate politician, was proud of all the municipalities he represented, and was especially proud of representing East Whiteland Township. With regard to East Whiteland Township, even though he entered semi-retirement in April of this year, he would still assist and make sure that Bernadette Kearney and his firm, Hamburg Rubin, Mullin, Maxwell, and Lupin, would continue to give the very best service and the very best advice. In addition to his real estate and municipal practice, Joe served for over 30 years as the Montgomery County Mental Health Review Officer, directly affecting the lives of literally thousands of patients. He was dedicating to seeing justice for whomever came before him in that capacity. Joe was also big, approximately six foot one and hefty. Big as Joe was, he was always dressed neat as a pin. As you probably recall, he would wear suspenders of various designs and always looked dressed for success. Joe had a wonderful dry sense of humor and was compassionate to all who came in contact with him, his family, business associates, and friends, all of whom will miss him dearly. For me personally, I will miss our office chats, analyzing his latest medical condition, providing legal tidbits and case law, a very dry joke, his golf ministrations, and his take on Villanova basketball. Everyone at Hamburg Rubin, Mullin, Maxwell, and Lupin will miss him and cherish our memories of him. I would respectfully request that these remarks be placed in the minutes of the East Whiteland Township and become a permanent part of their own. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience? Come on down. Jason?
First, to Joe's family, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for sharing him with us and the time that we've spent together, being a husband, being a father, and being away at these types of meetings night after night. Your family begins to, you know, appreciate the amount of time that they don't get to spend with you, so thank you for allowing him to do that with us. I want to give you a perspective of Joe that was not represented tonight. So, I'm a developer. I've been in the development business for over 20 years, so I actually predominantly always stood on the other side of the table as Joe, so I can share a different perspective about Joe. And the first thing I want to say about him is he is someone who embodied being a gentleman and what that meant and what that represented, the strength, the knowledge, the wisdom, and the fairness and the firmness that everyone has spoken about. Joe was very direct, and we appreciated that. You may not always like what Joe said, particularly as a developer, but he was direct. So, you knew what he wanted, you knew what was on his mind, and that was something I could appreciate. Joe and I first connected, we mostly connected on the level of sharing about our kids and our children's sports, which I thought was interesting, and he was, I guess, a Westmont fan, you know, for a while when the kids were younger, so that resonated with me as well. So, I did, I do believe Joe and I had a different type of friendship, which I appreciated, and I did learn a lot from Joe as well, I'm sure his clients have and his partners have. But I don't want to go on too much more other than offering my condolences and giving you my perspective that he was, he was the person I would call a gentleman. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Don, anyone on Zoom? Okay. I had a few emails sent to me and asked if I could read them, so I'll try to run those through this quickly. The first one is from former supervisor Sue Drummond. Joe McGory was an outstanding advisor to the township and a larger-than-life personality. He could be tough when the situation required, telling developers, the public, and the supervisors things they didn't want to hear, in firm, clear, but polite language, but in every case, he was fair and thoughtful. What I remember most about Joe, other than his seemingly endless ability to recover from his health challenges, is how he responded to my phone calls for advice. I'd ask my questions, explain the situation, and he'd say nothing. There was always a long pause, so long that I'd wonder if he'd stop, if the call had dropped, but no, he was thinking. He did not give quick, glib answers. He drew on years of experience and deep knowledge of the relevant law to give me thoughtful and practical advice that respected legal constraints while achieving the goal as much as possible. He took a genuine interest in resolving our challenges and guided us through complex situations with solutions that usually involve reasonable compromise, even knowing that compromise cannot make everyone happy. I trusted him implicitly. Approaching problems in his way, he contributed greatly to the resolution of several thorny township issues and ensured that East Whiteland Township remains a desirable community in which to live and work. I will miss Joe both professionally and personally. It was an honor and a joy to know him. Sue Drummond. I will read through a couple other ones quickly here. Ted Locker, former employee who worked here for many years. I first knew Joe as an applicant's attorney, but also had the pleasure of working with him as a Solicitor at both Limerick and East Whiteland Township. Anyone who knew Joe could see his love of the law and from my end specifically for zoning. Joe approached me while serving in Limerick about promoting a zoning officer association. We worked together to start the Montgomery County Zoning Officers Association. The organization quickly became popular with numerous municipal representatives, even more than just zoning officers. I was fortunate to serve as president of the association for 10 years while working with Joe and Kathy, Joe's secretary, to promote the ever-evolving world of zoning. I worked with Joe on topics such as power plants, medical marijuana, and legal updates passed by the state. Many municipal clients benefited from Joe's love and promotion of zoning knowledge, for which I will ever be grateful. Joe will be missed by many. May he rest in peace. Andy Ra, Blining Zone lawyer. I participated in many cases with Joe McGory over the years. In some matters, we were on the same side, and others where we were representing opposite sides. In all of these, Joe was a fierce and advocate for his client. But Joe also kept his eye on the possibility of achieving realistic and positive results beyond the hard line, and at the end of a contentious hearing, there was always often a twinkle in his eye, letting people know that he was doing what lawyers do, but that it was okay to shake hands as well, and then go home and enjoy time with his family and friends. He was also involved in the community in many positive ways, in many positive ways, above and beyond his legal work. Joe's presence among the bench and the bar of our region will be missed. John Walco. Joe McGory was and always will be my legal mentor, and I owe him my career as a municipal attorney. and I owe him my career as a municipal attorney. What he taught me in the seven years I worked with him, I could never have learned from any book or case law, because the greatest education was simply watching him in action. He was always confident of what the correct outcome should be in any situation, and then he could assess all the variables in that situation to get the right result. He was always able to see the forest, the trees. He always seemed to be three steps ahead, and he never sweated the small stuff. For someone who could be such an ardent tactical fighter for his clients, he was still able to radiate a calm, confident patience that led you to know that he had everything under control, that you could trust his decision, and that every, everything was going to be okay to the end if you followed his plan. Now, in my practice, when confronted with a developing legal issue, I find myself thinking, what would Joe McGory do? So far, that approach has not let me down. I'm standing on the shoulders of a giant, and I am so fortunate to have been able to learn from him, work with him, and to have him called my friend. And my final emails from Lou Colagreco and Denise Yarnoff, who quite often represent developers. I was profoundly saddened to hear of Joe's passing. As a colleague, I was very much appreciative of his candor and ability to navigate and communicate complex legal issues in a straightforward and common sense manner. You never had to guess where you stood with Joe or his client's position on any given matter. His integrity was beyond reproach. East Whiteland Township was served very well by Joe, and on behalf of our firm, I offer condolences to all who are saddened by his passing. I think it's safe to say Joe was a heck of a man. And thank you for attending and giving your comments. Donna, we have?
Yes, we actually have one more that we wanted to read.
One more?
Yes. It's from Scott Greenley.
Sure.
I am deeply saddened to learn of the passing of Joe McGory. I worked with Joe for several years as a planner, most recently at East Whiteland Township. I truly cannot put into words how much of an impact Joe has made on me as a professional. From transforming office parks to revitalizing commercial corridors, he even turned me into a Villanova basketball fan. Although Joe left us too soon, I know the imprints he made on his colleagues and the communities he worked with remain with us. My thoughts and prayers are with Joe's family, Hamburg Rubin, and my friends at East Whiteland Township during this difficult time.
And we have one other person on Zoom, Jerry Gorski. If you could let him join us.
Good evening. I was, it's great to hear all these comments. Interestingly enough, I got to know Joe 25 years ago when he was the coach of my son's Little League team. And I wondered who this guy was that showed up in his convertible car, professional clothes, coat and tie were in the car. And he did that, coached that team with the same enthusiasm that we all got to see as we were able to work with him professionally. And, you know, somebody that can do these volunteer jobs and, you know, be the consummate professional, it's an inspiration to all of us. And it was great to get to know him in that way.
Thanks, Jerry. Again, thank you for attending and your sharing your thoughts. Eileen, I'm glad you were able to be here. It was an honor to have you show up. And thank you again. Moving on, we're briefings. Today, we had executive sessions that were held at 5:00, and we discussed legal personnel and real estate issues. Next, we'll do this collaboration with Steve, John, and myself to discuss the Township Manager Succession Plan. John Nagel joined East Whiteland Township in 2015, the year before Joe became solicitor. And during the past year, we've been discussing about John's ultimate retirement plans and his goals and timeframes. And we have put together a succession plan that would allow John to remain Township manager through December 31 of this year, at which time he would become a project, special project coordinator on a number of areas that we have some issues with that would run through at least June of 2023 and potentially further depending on the outcome of those projects. In his place on January 1, pleased to announce that Assistant Manager Stephen Brown will become the new Township Manager in 2023. Any holes or any comments?
No holes. I think you covered it clearly. I just want to thank the board. I had never directly been involved in the succession plan. I guess you only get to do that once in your career. Thank God. But it was, she was a refreshing, positive, open-minded, very out-of-the-box set of conversations. I think we all shared what our goals were as an organization and also for me and my family personally. I think we were able to agree to is it works well for me and my family, and I hope it works well for the township as well. And I wish Steve all the best. We, since we've been in the business about the same amount of time, I think he's kind of my co-pilot. There's a lot of things that we talked about tonight, zoning, saldo, that I have no experience with and no desire to have any experience with, that Steve handles effectively and flawlessly. So, it just, it works. The marriage works. I don't think we agreed to how this was going to work when Steve joined us a few years ago. But it's worked well because I think we just respect each other as professionals, and we just figure stuff out. So, that's all I have to mention.
Can I put you on the spot? Do you have any comments, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, of course. I'm not going to pass this opportunity. I just have a little statement. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your confidence in me in having me continue to serve East Whiteland Township as your manager. There's a little-known fact about me, which is I have twice in my career applied for this position. So, I am thrilled, and that's, I'm not kidding. I am thrilled at this opportunity because I've always looked at East Whiteland as one of the premier communities in Chester County. So, it really is going to be a privilege and an honor to serve East Whiteland Township. I also want to thank John for bringing me on board and for his support and guidance over these last almost six years now. I want to thank staff as well for their support, and I look forward to leading the organization. Finally, I want to say to everyone, to the board, to staff, and to the community, I intend to carry on the tradition of excellence and professionalism in local government service that has been established here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any thoughts, any comments?
Congratulations, and we'll keep moving forward. Okay?
Next, I keep forgetting to ask. Any comments from the Zoom? I'm amiss on that aspect. 2D, the Route 30 Quarter.
I defer to the chairman.
Fill in the blanks.
As you know by now, we had applied for a $25 million federal infrastructure grant. And in the wisdom of Washington, they denied our grant. However, in that process, working with our consultants through many meetings, we ended up receiving a $3 million grant from the governor's office for improvements along Route 30. Also, along that period of time, we encountered a number of different grants, and our consultants are working diligently and with staff to secure additional funding through different programs and sources to try to help and improve the safety and the visibility of Route 30, which, as we all know, is a bit of a mess at this point in time. So, we're looking forward to going forward and trying to rectify issues. We will also be applying for the 2023 RACE Federal Grant funding, provided it remains on the docket. So, that's kind of where we are on the update. And John has been, John, myself, and the Delta team have put on more presentations than you can shake a stick at. And...
We're not done.
We're not done, right.
If I may, I'll just add, I'll channel my inner Joe McGory by taking an excerpt out of the notice from the RACE group, the RACE team, about our application. The department received hundreds more worthy RACE applications than it was able to fund in this round despite the increased funding provided by the bipartisan infrastructure law. Despite of that terse language, we will continue to soldier on and make our application even better over the next year. We actually have been invited by the RACE team to do an after discussion to determine what types of things that we can, how we can improve our application for next year. So, we wholeheartedly welcome that meeting that should happen fairly soon. We took about a month break after getting the bad news, and we started, restarted the group last Friday and discussed a number of issues. Delta, I have to commend them for it's, they're never short on recommending grants that are out there that we would potentially benefit from. There's a CFA multimodal grant for planning, about $900,000. We're also going to be making some rounds among the legislators, Representative Howard, Senator Comida, and future Senator for our district, Muth. We actually had a call with them recently, and we'll be reaching out to them on this project as well to get support at the Washington and Harrisburg level. Later on today, we'll also be, we'll be spending a lot of time with DCD over the next few months, especially the Center for Local Government Services. There's one grant in particular that we'll be talking about later on today that has to do with fire and EMS that DCD is closely involved in. There's some other grants that we'll share with the department heads on an as-needed basis. But we continue to move forward actively and assertively on this initiative.
I'll add, one other thing is that the Chester County Commissioners requested a meeting with us to learn more about the Route 30 Quarter improvements. So, we are meeting with them in a couple weeks, and we hope to get their support and their help going forward. One other, one other group of people that I would like to thank as we've, as we've gone through this, it's been fast and furious, as my cohort would call this project. But we couldn't have done this without a lot of support. Staff has been tremendous. And also, Rich and Peter have supported us behind this all, all the way back to January. So, I do appreciate that, that support that you guys have given. And thank you.
We appreciate the hours and hours of time that you devoted, which meant that we didn't have to.
I second that.
I make a motion that Rich is the next chairman of the 2023 RACE program. Do I have a second? Wow. Wow. I guess it defaults to me. Thanks, Peter. All right. Next, I'll turn it over again to John Nagel to talk about the status of our sewer sale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As folks may or may not know, the sewer sale was approved by the Pennsylvania PUC, and we ultimately settled on that sale on August 12. Unfortunately, the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Affairs appealed the PUC decision to Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. We actually met earlier this evening, and the board has agreed and decided to file a notice to intervene and participate in the appeal, although the PUC and Aqua will be taking the laboring wars and funding of that appeal. So, the deadline for that is actually in two weeks. So, we'll be moving on that fairly quickly. For those that we've talked to about getting easements on certain properties, I don't know how many in total there are, but there's probably a couple dozen at least that are out there. We will be making those payments sometime in the next 30 days to get those easements cured. Some of the projects that are related to the sewer sale will actually be deferred, the debt payoffs, the police station, Route 30 to some degree, but not completely. We won't be doing any construction, obviously, without the federal money. But there's a number of, there's a number of initiatives that will be delayed to some degree as a result of this decision. So, just wanted to give that update. And we'll continue to keep the board updated on this sewer sale as we move forward.
Donna, any questions out there?
Yes, Scott.
Moving forward, Jerry Gorski, if he can just give us a brief overview along with John on the campus master plan.
Sure. So, there in the agenda, this board has some work to do on the project with the zoning of the land and also to look at the land development plan. While we're working on that, the design team is in the design development, and we're going to be meeting at my office with Bernard and discussed a few alternatives with respect to the way the roof is framed and the building is heated and air-conditioned. So, the way we're headed is to heat and cool that building similar to the way the Adnan building will be heated and cooled with hopefully no natural gas or oil heat. And we're working on a structural design right now to find some economies in the way the roof is framed and little details like that. So, that's what we're working through. We're going to have another meeting with Bernard before they get more heavily into design. And obviously, we're working to a set of plans where we can put hard construction on Route 2 yet this year. Any questions?
Jerry, this is Peter Fixler. Did you say you were not going to heat the building with oil or natural gas?
Us, one of the alternatives that we're looking at right now is to use a system similar to what we designed for the Adnan building with air refrigerant flow systems. So, basically, we would use electric, So, basically, we would use electric, and we would have either cool or warm refrigerant that would circulate through the building, and it's a more efficient system. Mechanically, the initial equipment is a little more expensive, but overall, what we're doing is getting, in this approach, we're getting rid of rooftop equipment that would enlarge units that sit on a flatter roof, and we can build a much lighter roof system with a truss and put mechanical equipment in that truss space, and our efficiency, our operational efficiency will be much greater. And if we have the solar panels on the roof, we'll be using that electricity that we can produce at the facility where obviously, we can't produce natural gas or oil.
So, I'll just conclude by saying Jerry will be back to the board at a future board meeting when we get some of these issues resolved.
Next, we've got fire and EMS. Greg, if you can tell us about your water rescue program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and rest of Board of Supervisors. A little over a year ago, Hurricane Ida come through our region, and a short period of time dumped a tremendous amount of rainfall on our region. And in a short period of time, our fire and EMS department was dispatched to well over 20-plus water rescues in a very short period of time to several areas that have never flooded in this municipality before. And throughout these, the process of rescue and stranded motorists and rising water flooded houses and such, we found that our water rescue equipment was outdated and needed updated. So, a small work group was formed, and that was headed up by full-time firefighters Terry Bechtel and Brian Ratchke that are back here this evening. And they met with several vendors, and they found the best possible equipment to safely outfit our firefighters when we're entering high waters to rescue motorists and such. So, they're going to do a short presentation on the state-of-the-art equipment that we purchased and the recent and upcoming water rescue training that we're taking part in. So, I'll turn to Terry and Brian.
Hello. I'm Terry Bechtel, one of the career firefighters here. Brian Ratchke, also a career guy. Ida threw a real curveball at East Whiteland. And ironically, of the 20-some responses, which I had the privilege of responding to, none were in recognized waterways. We have a unique situation here where our roadways flood to the point to roof level on cars. 202 is tremendously affected by water for the failure of the state to clear out the storm drains. We had many rescues where water was deep enough on 202 where it was going inside of working vans. So, that evening proved to be, we were woefully unequipped and undertrained to perform these water incidents. Currently, your career staff, you have 12 career staff firefighters, eight of them are technically qualified for water rescue. Two of us are currently technically certified. I went to the acting CFO and said that we were delinquent on those responses, and we needed to upgrade our equipment for the safety of the firefighters and the safety of the victims, because they are certainly involved in the incident when we're removing them from cars that are stranded. So, through the volunteer board and through our committee that we had formed, we went ahead and got some proposals for current water rescue and safety equipment. Brian and I have had the privilege to serve on other water rescue teams. I came from Pottstown. We have a thriving water rescue team with two boats. So, that, our experience helped us guide through the vendors, and the equipment that you see, a fully suited individual, is about $2,300, and this is the most current and safest equipment that can be purchased. Currently, we have enough suits on the volunteer side, but not enough for the technically qualified individuals that can enter the waterway. Only the technicians can actually enter the water, whatever that water is, standing or rushing water. During Ida, we had, I would say, Class II rapids coming from Lancaster Avenue going down Moore Hall Road. We operated through the water with apparatus, but we knew then that we didn't have the right equipment to handle this type of situation. So, what you see here is a Class V vest. This is a Rescue 46 vest. This also has tether straps on it for technician level. We can tether it to the back for rope, advanced line systems, and things like that that we're currently getting that training to the individuals that don't have it. So, currently, the staff that we have that are qualified, if a water incident occurs at each platoon level, we have at least two firefighters that are technically certified on the career staff side. Currently, we have no volunteers at the technician level, but we are working with them to try to get them trained at that level. We have an advanced water class coming up in November. That's for advanced line systems to go across waterways and safety lines and pendulum boats and stuff like that. So, and then we have the most current helmets. These helmets come with LED lights. There are all kinds of bells and whistles that can go on this thing. We kept well within our budget when we went ahead and ordered this equipment. The Aqua Lung suit, the Aqua Lung suit is primarily used to protect the firefighters from not necessarily the water, but what's in the water. So, here you have standing water issues in this township, very, very few waterways. So, any sewer system or septic system that could be affected by floodwater, we're walking through that water, and we must be protected from those biohazards. And the Aqua Lung suit more than does that. The guys just used them at basic level water rescue training just conducted last month to bring guys up to the operations and awareness level, and they were just terrific in the water. Each man will also be equipped with work boots. These are water safety boots and also a 75-foot throw bag. This throw bag is lightweight, waterproof rope, and it's used to not only throw a safety rope to a victim, but also if we get in danger and we get trapped by water, our fellow team members can throw us a safety rope also. So, also, work gloves. These gloves, top of the line, can use, they're cold weather gloves, but can be used throughout the year, another way to save some budgeted money. So, like I said, this suit is about $2,300 to equip. Our only recommendation is that at least the eight technician levels have their own suits. It's tough getting to the station, and his, my suit's the only one available for him. As you see, that don't work. I'd probably struggle in his suit, too, be over my head. So, for technicians, they should have their own gear, just like our personal protective gear that we use in firefighting. We certainly can't use that in water. It would be just like an anchor for us. The technicians should have their own go-bags with all the equipment, so it's personally sized, so we can get to the incident, don our suit, and go into service without having to, hey, do you have a pair of elevens? I need a pair of nines, and so on. So, we wanted to share this with you, share you our future training. We're bringing guys up to the technician level. We are, we are helping the volunteers get to that level. Water rescue has been overlooked here because they just didn't do it a lot. Well, Ida certainly showed everyone that it can happen. And I just want to bring up, two weeks ago on 202, we had a significant rainfall, and we took two people out of a standing water situation, and the water, we were clearing the drains. The firefighters went in service to clear drains, and we were in water at 3 and 1/2 feet. And that's on 202 right here by 401. So, you don't need a waterway to have a water incident, and we had 20-some of them during Ida. So, if you have any questions, free to ask.
As far as you know, have the surrounding fire companies also started to load up on this gear so that there's enough to go around?
Well, there are, there are other area fire companies that do have, I don't know if they consider them teams, but they do have some certified guys. We had an incident during Ida at a neighboring fire company where EMS providers went down storm drains. This is a serious, it's a serious thing. You don't need a river to have that happen. So, there are other companies. The problem, the problem with sharing resources is that when a water event happens, it happens in every municipality. They're their own teams. We did it, not to bring up Pottstown again, but we had a boat team specifically come to us. Well, that boat team's coming from a fire company located on the Perkyomen, and we're in Pottstown. Their boats are tied up. So, it's important that, especially here, we've seen a lot of water incidents here, and it's important that we're equipped for it here, not boat, anything that technical. A lot of us are boat certified also, but for the waterways, it's dangerous to send guys dynamically into water, whether it's standing or running. And we had guys literally with ropes tied around their waists, walking through this water during Ida, and I was freaking out. Like, I come from a place that we don't do that, and there was a deficiency, and we had to bring it up, and we have to get it taken care of so our guys are safe. And the citizens are safe, too. The victim has to be protected, too.
I needed that last year. Where was it? In front of, in front of Rich Orwell's old house, I stood over two or three different times during that day in 3 and 1/2 feet or 4 feet of water, clearing out debris that had gotten through the sewer grate and clogged it. And every time I would get it away from there, the water would just swoosh in, and, you know, it was pretty strong.
I would never expect to go to a water rescue at Moore Hall Road and Route 30. And we had two people stranded on a porch there that we had to send guys in dynamically to bring them out, or they would have been there. I've never seen water like that at that elevation, and it was coming, all coming down to, it was, it was literally a river.
Yeah. I've been at that location for 16 years, and never saw that level and that speed and the strength of that water, so that's, that's great.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
And I'm not sure who put the agenda together, but it's interesting timing. We were, we were requested on behalf of the Pew Charitable Trust pertaining to flooding to support a bipartisan bill that would help develop a national strategy to help save tax dollars as disaster costs have increased the average of more than $225 million due to climate. It's, it's a bill that would create a chief resilient officer within the White House, develop a national resilient strategy for streamlining federal support and leads and grants to address these issues, and a number of other things that we felt that it was a bill worth supporting. There are 50 municipalities in Pennsylvania that have also signed off on it. And so, we wanted to just consider a vote of agreement to support this bill. So, if I can have a motion to consider a letter of support for the National Climate Adoption Resilience Strategy Legislative Flood Resilience Act.
Sure. Thank you, Scott. Make a motion to issue a letter of support for the National Climate Adaptation Resilience Strategy Legislation and Flood Resilience Act from East Whiteland.
Do I have a second?
That's a mouthful. I'll second it.
It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We will sign it, Donna, so make sure you get my John Hancock. Next, we've got Chris Jaeger to talk about, and Bernadette Curry to talk about amending of the Pennsylvania fireworks law for our township.
Yes, and I did speak with both Zach and Chief Jaeger in reference to this, and one of the changes is that we can now restrict the time that consumer fireworks can be used, that they can be restricted from 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM. And I, some municipalities want that, some don't, and I checked with the chief. It seems like we do want to put something into effect to restrict that time period so fireworks aren't going off at 2:00 AM on a Saturday. There are some limitations to that around July 4th, Memorial Day, and Labor Day, that you can do them a little beyond that on those days. There's also restrictions as to consumer fireworks where they can be used. So, this law makes it a little more clear that it can't be used on, the municipality could say it can't be used in our parks, on sidewalks, in public places like that. You can use it on your private property. It has to be with, it can't be within 100 feet of a building or a vehicle, even if you own that building or vehicle. It shouldn't be within 100 feet of that. It can't be directed at another person. It can't be used from a car or, the way they, the way they word it is, it can't be within, directed or at or directed from a vehicle or building. So, it's, it's getting more safety conscious. And so, Zach and the chief and I were discussing that we should probably update our fireworks ordinance. There is also, there's a difference between display and consumer fireworks, and the display fireworks, I think you probably don't have as often here. Some of the schools or some of the golf courses may do them, and for those, you are required to have a permit, so we have to have a permit for that for a display. Consumer fireworks, you don't have to do a permit. If you want to do a permit, you can.
For the Chester Valley annual event, Mark Moses does go out and inspect the area before they start.
Yes, and I think it's, again, more safety issue the state legislature is looking at, make sure nothing happens. Yeah.
And I understand that in compliance with the new law, any violations to these restrictions, penalty has increased substantially, correct?
Yes. In the, in the current law that's just passed, yes, they have substantially increased.
Is there by any chance an exemption for municipalities? Sometimes there is.
Well, not specifically.
Okay. Just curious, that's all. We had fireworks here 15 years ago, so, long time ago, once, yeah.
Bernadette, that enforcement would fall upon the police or Mark Moses for the personal?
Yeah, it would normally fall, I think, on the chief, and you take them before the district court, and in some instances, some of the model ordinances are actually sending them to the district court so they're aware of, here's our, here's East Whiteland's new penalties should someone be provided a ticket or a non-traffic citation in reference to that.
Okay.
So, to set off a firework at midnight for $500, it better be a good firework. Moving on, I am going to make an adjustment for our very, very wonderful folks in the back, and Steve, Brad, I'm going to pull Item 3E up forward so our folks with the People's Pantry can get out of here. Ben, you've been very patient back there. And so, Steve, can you give us maybe a little background here on the funding plan for the ERP?
Yes, sure, Scott. Excuse me. The township received the first, what's they call it, a tranche, which I'd never heard that word in my life before, which is basically a payment of funds last spring in an amount of about $671,000. We are supposed to be receiving the second tranche this week. The board is determined to expend roughly $800,000 of these funds for a new HVAC system that will service this building. What we've also discussed is using some of those monies to fund local human service agencies such as the People's Pantry. I met with them last December. I met with some other local agencies, and I've been working on basically an application form and process where local agencies can apply for projects to, that are intended to offset the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Certainly, the People's Pantry program does that. Certainly, the People's Pantry program does that. So that's a little bit about the program. And the board has indicated they wish to fund the People's Pantry in the amount of $1,500 per month. As I understand it, there was an urgent request from the pantry to the community as their supplies were running low. The pantry serves the Great Valley School District residents that are in need. They've seen a great increase in the number of registered families and individuals due to the pandemic. The only numbers I have are from 2021, when they served 3,500 individuals and approximately 1,000 households. They can do a lot with the money, which in the scope of the, you know, the money we received is not that much, but they can basically do a lot with a little. So there's really two things here. One is for the board to ratify the action to make the monthly payment to the People's Pantry. And the other is hopefully just authorize me to finalize the application form and release it to the public because there are other agencies that are interested in applying for funds.
I have a question, Steve. Can we do more than that?
Sure. That's up to you folks. The People's Pantry would have to, I don't know exactly what their needs are. When I met with them, their budget isn't very big. I don't know if that's enough or if they could use more. That's something they'd have to answer.
Okay.
But you can certainly provide more.
I will say that their information is, they look for, or look for products like food, paper products, seasonal, fresh produce, holiday programs and gift programs. And they are located at 384 East Lancaster Avenue. And they are a 501(c)(3) organization. So anything you donate to this great organization is tax deductible, I believe, if I'm following my tax laws. But...
And if actual products are not contributed, that's where the cash comes in to help them obtain what they're looking for.
Purchase what you need, like in August, you went, you were out of everything from what I understand, right?
Yeah. Yeah, our shelter is up one Saturday after we had about 55 families in the shop, darling, I'm going to turn around and open this restaurant already. So it's a thing on Facebook, which was tremendous help. We ended up with about 1,500, 50 pounds of food along with a so-called sunblock. All right, so we, which is great because we do, we purchase dairy products, everyone, and a gallon of milk is $5.5 cents. And when we're buying, I don't know, I think a month, you know, they add up, all the cheese and butter and everything. Yeah. And we do offer, we do get a lot of donations that they, we don't get donated, then we purchase on our...
Okay. Mary, thank you. This is Mary Decker speaking. Peter, would you like to make a recommendation for a dollar amount?
Oh, a higher dollar amount? Or for the...
Yeah, you asked about increasing it. What were you thinking?
I would defer the People's Pantry for what they may need. I think we have, I don't know, I don't have a specific number in my head. It just, the number we have seems low, in my opinion.
Right.
For what budgets I've seen go through.
Yeah, again, they can certainly speak if they'd like, but it might be best to start with the $1,500. And if it's not enough, then we can modify it.
And there are other programs that Steve is working on and looking at. So I would say, at some point in time, if you feel as though there's an adjustment to that amount that you need, reach out to Steve or myself or Peter, and we'll address it at that point in time. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's important for people to know that all money that's donated or given is...
Just so everyone can hear on Zoom, if you could come up and speak into the microphone, just so everyone can hear as it's being recorded.
I'm Donna Hatton. I live on Summit Road in Malvern, but I do volunteer at the People's Pantry. But I think it's important for people to know that anything, money that's donated is all used to supply products to Great Valley School District. We have nobody that's paid. We're all volunteers. So I think that's important for people to know that.
Yeah. Good.
And Mary Decker, of course, is our pantry coordinator, so.
Great. Okay.
It's fortunate or unfortunat, but the majority of our clients do live in East Whiteland. Amongst, you know, the two trailer parks and, of course, Brit Aaron and also our Malvern Crossing. So that is where a lot of our clients live, which all, of course, locate East Whiteland. We do service all of Great Valley School District.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Good information. Thank you for what you do.
To make a recommendation, Scott?
Yep.
I think this is a great starting point. I think we could do more down the road, but I'd love to make a recommendation for, what was it, Steve? The fund?
$1,500 per month.
$1,500 per month to the People's Pantry through the, what fund?
It's the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the township received.
We'll say that. Thank you.
No second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Thank you. Again, thanks for patiently sitting back there. Now going back in the order of the agenda, we'll go to 3A. We've just got the Gorski Engineering.
Yeah, I'm going to modify the agenda on the fly here. The wording is my fault. The wording should be approved proposal from Blue Scope Construction, which is the third-party contractor under the, under the business model that we currently are using for the HVAC project as well as the police station and recommending for this one. Jerry Gorski should be on virtually. If we can just open that up for him, he's going to make the actual presentation. The documentation actually came in, I believe, within the last day or so. So that was in the board packet, I believe, or at least transmitted to the board. Is Jerry on? Can you tell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll stop talking.
Okay. So over the last two months, we met up with staff. As we got through the HGC electrical portion of the work, there were some general construction items that needed attention, a little bit of work to accommodate the codes offices as they move into the public works space, some work to freshen up the bathrooms. And a big part of the project is to improve security in the lobby for the staff that's working in the building. So some boiler resistant materials and some creating, basically sectioning the lobby off from portions of the building that are occupied by staff. So we prepared the plans and developed this kind of work. And the pricing is $110,000. That's before you, and... Yeah, we have the pointer out there on the screen so you can see what some of the security work is.
Jerry, if you could just verbally describe those in red and then if Zach could use the pointer to show where we're talking about. There's, the project started as just the area surrounding the bathrooms and then the offices where the employees are to the right. But as we got further in in time proceeded with the project, it became a larger scope project. So if you can just walk through visually with the board, I think that'd be helpful.
Sure. It's, as you come into the building, to create a secure separation from the, what's labeled as reception area on the plan and the meeting room. So we're going to bolster up that wall, correct? And as you would go in either direction, we would just start to the left because there's, that's an opening corridor now, is to create a door and a partition there. So that's sectioned off. And same to the right, that basically, instead of just having an opening corridor, you would have a secure separation from the reception area to the office space for admin.
Can you mention about the meeting room? Because where we're currently sitting, there's a number of improvements there, including the exterior door that's going to be, that's recommended to be secured.
Yeah. So again, the main partition and a new door to the office space that would allow anybody that's in that room to immediately back into the admin space without going through the reception. Correct.
Kind of jump in where Jerry's leaving off. These doors, this set of doors here needs to be secured. That is actually, could be an access point for the public. It would be a hell of a entrance because there really isn't any easy way to get into those doors, but we wanted to better secure that entrance there, the rear entrance. And the staff can feel free, because this was a group project, this wasn't John's special. Donna was involved, Steve, RHR, Naveen was involved. And in addition to that, and I'll stop, is as we consolidated the code and the public works staff into the public works building, we realized that if the public goes into the public works building now to process, get their permit applications submitted, they could basically have free rein into that building without any obstacle. So part of this proposal is to secure that building to some degree. It's already fairly secure, but this would close it up to folks that would just meander around the building without any escort. End of October, the lease expires the end of October, and I believe it's gone before We'll have some modest modifications to that entrance on the side once the modular is And Jerry, can you mention about the model that we're using here? I know you've presented that concept before, but just 25 words or less on how we're actually...
Sure. It's a certified cost model, the same as the other two contracts that have already been let. Basically, you're working with us, with Gorski and Jerry and our staff through the project. And it's a certified cost approach. Everything's covered on wage, everything can be sold, all the standards of contracting in Pennsylvania, Bernadette and Blue Scope have negotiated the way they contract. So there's really not much else to do from that point of view. It's just if the cost and the scope is acceptable, we don't know what to do from there.
And we're recommending, if funds are available, I'm looking over at Steve, for ARPA funds, we would recommend that those be used for this project, similar to the HVAC project.
What's the timing? Construction period?
Yeah, we're constructing it as to the procurement of the boiler resistant materials that's going to dictate the schedule. Obviously, we can't get a whole lot of schedule information until we can secure, to replace the ore. And that's going to drive when this happens.
If everything was here today, a month construction, two months, three months?
At the time, we had a little bit less than two months worth of work. Just because we're in an existing building, then it wouldn't be any more than a week's probably, or less.
Any questions from the audience? Rich, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to move forward with the proposal from Blue Scope Construction for the building security restoration modifications for admin, public works, and codes for $110,801.
Peter, for a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On behalf of, sorry.
On behalf of the staff, I want to thank the board, especially, this is a big issue for the employees, and we just want to, we just want to take care of our own, and the public when they're in the building.
John, would you like to give us an overview on the DCED?
Yes, and I promise this one will be quick. Earlier this year, a couple of months ago, the board did agree to apply for DCD grant for study for fire and EMS, regional fire and EMS. The board did approve that. The requirement now from DCD as part of that process is for us and the other neighboring municipality, any other neighboring municipality to sign a letter of intent as well. So tonight, we're asking for the board to sign one on behalf of East Whiteland. And with that, I have already reached out to two neighboring municipalities, and they are also interested in it. One would be Tridiffin, and the other one would be East Town. So once we give our green light on this, if the board's so inclined, then I would imagine those two communities will be interested as well. And that may not be the end of it. There may be others. I think this may catch on with some other towns.
See, only if it makes sense. If it's a regional thing, it's better to have more townships involved with putting one regional plan together.
Right.
And even the state government would know that.
Makes a lot of sense. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, just one more factoid that's in the description. It's free.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve a letter of intent to the DCED for local services, for the Governor's Center for Local Service to request technical assistance for regional fire and EMS.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve Brown, tell us about our new full-time codes department administrator?
Well, I can also make this quick, or I can make it, make it longer. I see Rich voting for quick. Jennifer Marks is our new codes office administrative assistant. She started yesterday, so I would hope you would act affirmatively on this action. She came to us, she's well qualified and well recommended, and she passed all her clearances, and we're thrilled to have her. She's, again, just started, and she's being trained, and so far, so good.
Rich, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to ratify the conditional job offer to Jennifer Marks, full-time codes department administrative assistant.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jennifer's, can come to work tomorrow.
And get paid.
And get paid, yes. And get paid. More important. Thank her for working the last couple of days for free. Moving on, Steve, if you can tell us about the...
Yeah, I'll be even.
Hopefully, everyone in Springville... Hopefully, everyone in Springville Farms is listening.
I'll be even briefer. This item is just to approve an agreement with Michael Baker International for survey and engineering services for the Sidley Road Mill Lane Trail connection to the Chester Valley Trail in the amount of $163,494. Now, this is just for Phase 1 services, there will be additional services. Once we narrowed down some of our options for crossing the bridge and the culvert and coming up to the trail, that's when we'll get to the Phase 2 pricing. But John Neal and I and Bernadette reviewed the contract, and we find it to be what we're hoping for and in order. As I look at Bernadette, it reminds me, there are actually a couple changes to the document that we asked Michael Baker to make, they've agreed to them, and so you'll get a slightly modified version.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the end result of your unique RFQ process interviewing engineers?
Yes, it is.
I pay attention. It's getting late. Rich, would you like to make that motion, please, for that agreement?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the agreement with Michael Baker for engineering services for the Sidley Road Mill Lane Trail connection to the Chester Valley Trail for $163,494.
I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And passes. All right, we've moved on, taking care of our ARPA. At this point in time, I will open the meeting for a public hearing to be handled by Bernadette Kearney.
Yes, this is a public hearing for an ordinance of the supervisors of the township of East Whiteland to rezone a certain parcel located at Sixth Mill Lane, identified as parcel number 42-4-59.1, from the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to the INS Institutional Zoning District. And the legal notice indicates this ordinance amends the township's official zoning map to rezone Sixth Mill Lane from its current zoning of R1 to the INS Institutional, and amends the zoning ordinance at all relevant parts and sections to reflect the amended zoning map. Going to mark a series of exhibits. B1 will be the August 12, 2022 email to the Chester County Planning Commission. B2, the August 12, 2022 email to the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission. B3, the August 29, 2022 email slash letter to the Daily Local News with legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4, the August 29, 2022 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5 is the affidavit of posting of the property. B6 is the letter of notification to the neighbors. B7 is the proof of publication. B8 is the legal notice, and B9 is the actual ordinance. I don't know if Zach, you wanted to make any comments on this, but basically, this was a part of the campus master plan, that we were rezoning this Sixth Mill Lane to INS.
Yeah, nothing to add, other than the fact that the, it was previously zoned residential, there was a four-lease property there. This zoning is consistent with the surrounding zoning for the campus, the township campus, which allows municipal government uses, among other institutional type uses.
And to confirm, Zach, the residents in and around the area were notified, correct?
Yeah, the code, code and the MPC require neighbor notices for something like this, but we did send a 500-foot radius mailing, and then added on to some of those streets. It missed a couple of people, so we added them to the mailing, and they, those went out. Two mailings, actually, one, two weeks ago and one last week.
Okay, great. What's that?
That's a thorough mailing.
Yeah, it is. Zach Thorough, partner.
I didn't know if anyone was in the audience here for this, for the rezoning, or anyone online? No, no public comment? I don't know if the board supervisors had any other questions?
No, I don't, this is pretty simplistic.
Yes.
No questions?
No questions? If there's no public comment and no further questions, we can close the public hearing and go back into the public meeting to vote on the ordinance?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the zoning map to rezone Sixth Mill Lane from R1 to the INS Institutional District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Winter must be coming.
Yes, it's that time of year again, where we are asking permission to advertise for diesel fuel and heating oil bid. Heating oil bid will be drastically reduced this year with the new HVA system here, but we still have two properties that we have to provide oil for.
Just out of curiosity, is it substantially upgraded from what you've seen price-wise from then last year?
Yes. Last year, on heating oil, we had 238 a gallon, diesel was at 245. I looked at the spot prices today, they include tax, so they're a little high. Heating oil was 420, and diesel was 515. So, it'll be a little lower than that, but...
Sure. Yeah. It is what it is, I guess.
Can't avoid it.
Nope, can't avoid it. Rich, would you like to make a motion to advertise?
Sure. Motion to advertise the heating and oil diesel fuel bid for 2023.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations on it. Zach?
Sure. Yeah, so no development applications here in position to be voted on. The first of the ones for review is the preliminary slash final land development application for the police station. Essentially, Al, I think can give a little overview if the board would like, obviously you're familiar with the project. What is on the agenda this evening would be to consider authorizing staff and solicitor to draft a, an approval resolution that could be voted on in October. Would you like a brief overview?
Sorry. A brief overview, yes.
Just going to ask for questions, but really quick. Do you want to put the... Basically, the, we're proposing, I believe it's a 29,000 square foot lease building. There will be three, actually, three entrances. There is a, two entrances for official police vehicles, and they will be gated and fenced in with parking. Is it okay if I...
Point it out.
Can you take the, okay, can you take the microphone with you, though? Please? Thank you.
So we have two points of access, one point off of Mill Lane here, and there will be a gate in a fenced-in area, completely fenced in is the parking, and there's another gate on this side, and this is for, all for official police vehicles. And then the other entrance will be off of the existing driveway to the rest of the municipal campus. There is a proposed parking area for visitors or people conducting business at the police station, and it has 13, 14 parking spaces here, and their access will be at this point right here, and the other, the police vehicles and the official vehicles will enter in, under the, in the building on the lower level. We have stormwater management, it's being proposed in this area here, and we are requesting, I'm sorry, four waivers. And I think you were provided the letter for four waivers. The additional one that we just added recently was the for preliminary slash final land development approval. Now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think we've seen this numerous times.
I keep coming back to the, this is more of maybe a question for Chief, Chief Jaeger. Do, do we need a fence around the parking lots? We seem to have existed for quite a while without one, is it such an incident that we have to secure the vehicles?
It's important for us, as the police officers have some fence around the parking lot, especially their personal vehicles and so forth. In light of some of the things that have happened in the last five to 10 years, there have been times when police officers were targeted, and it's easy when you know where they park, and when they're going to come and when they're going to go. I think at this point, when you're going to this extent to make that building as nice as you're going to do, there should be that security fence. I think I've heard from as many officers that have known or heard anything about it, and they, their primary thing keeps going back to, is the fence going to be there? So the way it is now, at our station, people come and walk around the back at times. We've actually had somebody enter people's personal vehicles several years ago and stole things out of the car. The idea is to separate us, when we walk through the door and go out on patrol, then we can be approachable, but when you're coming and going out of your personal vehicle, you...
Thank you, that answers my question. Thank you.
I think you mentioned, there are going to be a gate on the Mill side and on the driveway side, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
On the Mill Lane side, it's maybe about 20 feet off of Mill Lane, so it's, it's right up, right up against there, so it's very visible to anybody trying to...
And that's where the fence starts? The fence connects to that gate and then runs along the parking lot?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Al, I know you're perhaps not a traffic engineer per se, but do you anticipate a fair amount of additional traffic on, onto Mill Lane?
No, no, we don't. We're expecting most of the traffic to exit out off to the existing driveway, because there's a stoplight there, and it's easier to access and then out of the facility.
Okay, thank you. Again, I think we've kind of talked this through a number of times. Peter, you're good? Okay. Rich?
Okay, I make a motion to authorize solicitor to draft the resolution for the preliminary final land development application for the East Whiteland Township Police Station. I find it especially interesting that we're holding ourselves to this process that was started many years ago, too, when we probably don't have to, but it's a good idea.
Yeah, the other piece is that the, obviously, the zoning ordinance process had to play out as well, but yeah, no, I understand. Try to be consistent as we can all the time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. And that concludes our discussion on Knickerbocker. Guys, you, guys, you missed it. Good news and bad news. Zach, you want to lead us through this very simplistic process on Knickerbocker? Sorry, it's, it's bewitching hour, I'm getting goofy.
Scott's getting punchy. You guys grab a Snickers from the vending machine while you're out there?
There's a piece of press on it.
Okay. Thanks.
Mine.
All right, so the second item here under this topic is the preliminary subdivision land development application of, for Knickerbocker redevelopment. It's been through the, a number of iterations, a number of submissions to the township, it's been to the Planning Commission who made a favorable recommendation with, with conditions. I'll turn it over to the applicant, if they'd like to kind of run through briefly, obviously the overview of the project, I think everyone's familiar with it, maybe speak to some of the waivers and sort of where things stand with the review letters.
Well, thank you, everyone, for hanging tough tonight. I know it's probably been a long meeting, you guys covered a lot of information. I'll try and do my best to retread some of the ground on Knickerbocker. We have been in front of the Planning Commission, I think, no less than five or six times at this point, our most recent submission, we did receive favorable recommendation for approval for the preliminary plan. We did submit within that a waiver request letter, a waiver request letter. The majority, and the way that we tried to present the letter was to demonstrate the majority of the waivers that we requested pertain to Knickerbocker Way. I don't think that there was more than three or four waiver requests that were related to the actual development of the community within where the homes are being developed. I could go through that waiver request letter, but it's, it is, I've done it once before, and just reflecting on it, it can be a little bit painful doing it, so I'm happy to review any of those items that are contained within it.
Jason, there was quite a few outstanding things about building materials, lot lines, how the front loaded driveways are going to look, architectural renderings, stuff like that. Where does all that stand?
Great question. So we are resubmitting tomorrow for, for our final plan, which is separate from this preliminary plan procedure. So things such as the renderings to discuss some of the architectural features, that information's going to be contained within that submission. So we would be back in front of the Planning Commission to review those materials, along with some of the other things that are contained within either the staff review letter, the Arrow review letter, the Pinoni review letter, or the McMahon review letter. The idea there being that we've been working very closely with staff and the consultants to address any of the items that were not resolved at the preliminary plan approval process, so that at the final plan approval process, we've resolved those items. So reflecting on perhaps the Arrow review letter, I know Dan McKenna from DL Howes is in the room. The way that we've entered into working through this is to not really be in a vacuum, but to be a little bit more collaborative in working with the consultants to get answers to some questions and some of the back and forth. So as a result, our submission reflects the work and the progress that we did with those consultants. So in that resubmission for the final, we expect a majority, if not all, of those items to be resolved. We'll have the traditional third-party items. We do have probably some, I think at least one item in particular, that I'd like to try and get worked out with the board as it pertains to our, our park and rec fee that we had originally proposed. So hopefully, that answers your question.
I'm sorry, that answers my question about the, some of the outstanding materials in the review letter. What I, could you talk more about Knickerbocker Way? Because looking at the review letter, looking at the McMahon letter, I'm having a tough time figuring out where it's all landing, because I don't understand all the, I guess, the engineering descriptions of how it is going to be laid out.
Sure. So the, so Knickerbocker Way is this existing meandering road... So, the, so Knickerbocker Way is this existing meandering road that.
Starts at the driving range, correct?
Starts at the driving range, coming off of, coming off of West Liberty Boulevard. In many of our original submissions, we did not show that as being a connect, kind of a connector road with the community, but it, the way that the plan developed really was from a lot of comment and review that came from planning, staff, and the consultants that wanted to see us maintain that road and, and keep it open. So, with that being said, there were really one mitigating factor that prevented us from, from just turning it into the road as proposed to be designed within any of the township code. So, the mitigating factor was the fact that it exists within the permanent landfill. So, to better, to kind of make it better, but not precise to the code, we came up with ways to make it as such. So, it is a 20-foot wide road. We're improving the culvert that goes over Valley Creek Road, and there are certain sections of the road where it wasn't quite 20 feet, where we figured out ways to, to actually expand on it to get it to 20 feet. We improved on striping signage, site visibility, certain vegetation clearing in order, in order to get it to that point. So, the way, and again, with, the waiver request letter is predominantly the first few pages, and I could just give you, I think, just a quick example, curbs, right? So, typical township roads would require a curb, but we didn't have the ability to put curbs in, onto this particular road. And we went on to say, you know, McMahon did support this, was, this is very similar to most of the roads that we drive on here today, contain, you know, that are within Chester County. So, it wouldn't be too unfamiliar in that regard.
No, I understand that. The, the 20-foot width on the landfill is limited by DEP, but a good portion of the road comes from the driving range to the, I guess to the bridge, and that leads up to the landfill. That's going to be 20-foot, or is that going to be a bit wider?
So, that'll stay 20 feet.
Okay.
And as you see with, so the driving range is just worth, worth retreading. So, the driving range was a, a non-permitted but closed landfill.
Sure.
And then you had the larger permitted landfill. The unpermitted one occurred just a different period in time where the DEP rules applied. So, it's closed, everything is monitored, it's overseen by DEP, but one we call the unpermitted, the one we call the permitted, just because one predated the other before those permits existed.
And this is going to be one of two ingress egresses into the development?
Correct. One of two public ingress egress. We will have a third emergency road access.
Of course, on Mill Lane.
That's coming off of Mill Lane.
Of course. Zach, do we have Chris on?
Yeah.
Oh, we do? Okay. I just wonder if you could chime in, Chris, if he's on the, online.
I'm here. Would you like any people to hand on?
I just, I see this as a, a very frequently used road and with people coming and going, I, it's tough for me to picture a 20-foot road that's even 25 miles per hour. How, how's that going to work, and do you feel in terms of, you know, the morning rush, the morning rush, the afternoon rush, in and out?
Yeah, so, and Jason did a good job providing in the background. Obviously, if this property were a blank slate without the restrictions that are placed upon it, we wouldn't design the road this way. In fact, the applicant originally intended it to improve Knickerbocker Way to meet township roadway standards. But as we got further into the process through land development, we realized the restrictions that exist on this property because of the, the landfill permit that do not allow construction. So, we were faced with two choices. One is remove the access altogether, and the other was maintain the access. So, we would have two points of ingress and egress for the community, which I believe is the better approach, but in doing so, Knickerbocker Way would essentially have to remain very similar to its existing configuration. What does that mean? Well, the applicant tells us, and, and, you know, it's been verified that we're not able to really reconstruct any portion of Knickerbocker Way. We can do very minimal improvements, the applicant can do some minimal improvements around the edges, but no substantial construction. So, the most notable problems that exist on that road today are the, some of the horizontal curves on that road. You know, it's, again, not ideal, but I think in this case, those curves will act as a traffic calming feature, or it'll help keep the speeds of traffic slower on that roadway. So, that's a good thing. So, you know, we, this will remain a lower speed, lower volume roadway. Generally, where the curves become a concern is when we, when they result in a sight distance issue, but we've worked with the applicant in their design to ensure that the vegetation will be cleared around those curves. So, even though there is a substandard curve on Knickerbocker Way, vegetation will be cleared so that we have adequate sight distance through the inside of the curve, if you will. So, you, traffic will be able to see, they may not be looking along the length of road, they may be looking through the inside of the curve, but sight distance will be maintained, which from a safety standpoint to me is the most important aspect for that road, in order for it to be a safe road. In terms of road width, I don't have a concern about a 20-foot wide roadway. 20 feet is the minimum. There are sections of that road that are less than 20 feet wide today. We basically settled upon 20 feet as the minimum standard we the township would accept. We have 20-foot roads, in fact, we've got, we've got 18-foot wide roads in parts of Chester County that carry much higher volumes of traffic and higher speeds than I think we're going to see here. So, a 20-foot wide roadway, two 10-foot traveling lanes is very sort of indicative of a Chester County country road. I think that matches up very well with the geometry of the roadway and, and sort of that curve of a linear alignment. So, I think 10-foot wide roads, 10-foot wide lanes, 20-foot wide roadway will work fine here. And that's the minimum. There are certainly sections of that roadway where it will be wider than 20 feet. 20 feet is just the minimum. There is the culvert that is being replaced as part of this project that I'll say roughly a midpoint long Knickerbocker Way. That's a one-lane crossing. So, we already have a restriction point on this roadway. So, you know, to have a roadway of 20 feet wide, again, it's consistent with a one-lane culvert crossing, where we do want traffic to, to travel at a slower rate of speed because they're ultimately going to achieve, they're going to reach that, that culvert, and then they're going to need to come to a stop potentially and yield to oncoming traffic. So, again, the culvert is a feature of the road that is consistent with, I think, the rest of the roadway, the characteristic of the road is, is really a country road. So, you know, all that to say, I think the applicant has worked well with the township to strike a balance between achieving a minimum needs for moving traffic on this road in a safe manner, while also trying to respect the landfill permit restrictions and still, you know, achieve a road that'll be safe and effective. And, you know, we are also, I think, comforted by the fact that this is not the only access to the community. We have the access up at the lap road, which frankly, during much of the rush hour, the, I anticipate lap road traffic, we'll get a fair amount of the traffic to and from this community because this provides a direct, a more direct connection out to the Pennsylvania Turnpike. So, maybe a much longer answer than you liked, but we put a lot of thought into this, and we do believe this strikes a balance that meets all the various competing needs for this situation.
Forgive me if I'm restating what we already know. The road will be reconstructed to the, the updated standards that we have for roads in the township though, correct?
In terms of the pavement thickness?
Exactly.
No, so, you know, the applicant can probably talk about this better than I can in terms of what they're allowed and not allowed to do, but what we've, what the township can explain to us, because of the permit restrictions, the landfill permit restrictions, they are not able to reconstruct. There are sections of the roadway that the existing pavement is substandard, and because of the permit, landfill permit restrictions, they're not able to excavate and reconstruct all sections of the roadway because of those permit restrictions. So, that's actually one outstanding item right now. We are working with the applicant to settle upon a pavement spec that we think respects the restrictions of the landfill permit, but still meets the needs of the community. I will point out that these roads are private roads, so they will not be the responsibility of the municipality, but we are trying to find, strike a balance and find a pavement spec that we think is going to be sufficient for the traveling public using the road so we don't place an unnecessary burden on the HOA of the community. So, that is, that is still an outstanding item that does require a waiver, and I actually think that's maybe the only waiver request from a traffic standpoint that we're not ready to endorse at this time, but I do believe it's one that will be, a solution will be identified in the final land development.
Thank you, Chris.
And by the way, I, thank you, Chris, for helping to articulate all the work that we did together on it. There was, as it relates to the typical road, typical road section, we've actually have been sharing information back and forth with McMahon's office. We've gotten feedback on, on, on that information, and we also provided an additional geotechnical report as it relates to, you know, the quality of, the quality of the finished pavement that it would be, to help support some of that information. So, we've increased the, the actual thickness of, of the road and the sections we've identified that needed to repair. And as far as the traffic flow and the, the amount of traffic, one of the things we actually worked very closely with Chris's office on, if you know now, when you come off of Sweet Street Road, you can make a left end or a right, it's almost full access coming in and out of the driving range. So, what we're going to do, and this has been a detail we've been working on for, for months and months and months, is to actually eliminate that left-hand turn coming off of West Liberty Boulevard, so you will no longer be able to make a left-hand turn to go back into Knickerbocker Way. So, it'll be a, a right out, right in, and left out only from Knickerbocker Way, but no left-hand turn in. So, that'll eliminate some of that traffic.
Thank you for reminding me of that detail. That is a good one. Just the reason I bring it up, my concern, not so much the 20-foot road width, but the, the state that the road is in now is not obviously great, and the traffic on there was some heavy, heavy trucks usually delivering green waste to Reagan's yard down there. And just the concern is, if it's going to be able to be brought up to a spec that can withstand trash trucks coming in weekly and out, I mean, not to say that they're definitely going to come in and out there, but if that's their path, that may be their path in and out. So, I, that's, that's my concern, because there's enough privately owned roads in the township that just are in poor shape because they're privately run, and they don't meet those specs.
And they weren't poorly built too.
Peter, you're.
Yes, exactly.
Peter, you're reading my mind. I was, I was going to follow up with, with slightly different. Where I live, trucks go along Sidley Lane illegally, 18-wheelers, quite often. They, they make the wrong turn. When do these 18-wheelers gets down on the Knickerbocker and ends up having to cross the culvert, can that, Chris, can that culvert handle something of that weight?
Well, I'll, I'll answer for, for Chris, because they do it now.
Really?
They have, they have, and so those large trucks that are bringing, the green waste that Peter's referring to are these tri-axles, like you were describing, that are, they're, they're filled with, with trees, basically. So, if you ever see the large trees that get cut down, the cranes come in, they pick them up, and they put them on the giant trucks, and those eight, those 18-wheelers, that's what's been going over that culvert, even, you know, is, in this, in the recent years. The geotechnical report that we have done states that the culverts actually, it needs repairs, but it's currently in a stat, in a state where it's not completely collapsing, right? It's not, it's not in such poor condition. But we've used R2 Engineering and R2 Associates, and we've provided the details of that plan of how we intend to make those changes. So, to take that a step further and answer your question more directly, when we finish the work, it will be more than substantial to, to, to handle the types of trucks that you're talking about. So, they do, and the width, and the width of the bridge today is not going to change, so it's going to be the same width as it is today. So, we're not going to widen it where they can, with more than one truck going over. And Peter, just on the road piece, I do want to go back to it for a second. So, when we, when we provide a typical road section, it's an engineered section showing, you know, how many, how many inches of modified, how many inches of asphalt, these types of things. So, that's been the details we've gone back and forth associated with the geotechnical reports. So, we actually are sort of doubling down on that based on some feedback we've got from McMahon, which will be contained within the submission we're going to be making.
There are the two waivers in the Arrow letter, July 19th, that are not being, are recommending denial. Can you address those two? It's items one and two. I think there's an answer, but.
Yeah, the, yeah, so there's, there, I think there ended up being a revised, so at the meeting, I think he's here tonight too, there was one in particular, we had discussed prior to going, we were able to discuss prior to going to the meeting to further clarify it, and I do believe we had received a, a support and recommendation for, I'm trying to look at that exactly.
Okay. So, there's an update to the July 19th review letter?
I believe that there is.
Al and I reviewed that. They did provide the information that, I think it was kind of a carryover from a previous review letter. It was just about the ones regarding the surrounding features within 300 feet.
Yes.
That information has been provided, and it's actually, well, it's still a waiver request, but it's supported, I guess is a better way to put it.
All right. It's 175 dash 21C10, 175 23V1.
Yes, we did look at those. That was a negative, this is our, this is a carryover from the previous letter. We did look at that afterwards, and we, we had no objection.
This is very right, okay. All right. Just have to make sure you know that I read it, that's all.
I believe that you did.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
I would love to see this tomorrow, if you will, without it saying outstanding or deny, and, because it, we come to this meeting a little over or underprepared in terms of where to go, and I, yeah, that's where I am.
I mean, in terms of.
Like, just to know that Arrow is no longer recommending denying the waiver and the, kind of better understanding of things, what's outstanding and what's, wants to be denied, what's not to be denied. You know, I approached this preliminary approval with Joe Magory in my ear. Preliminary is, is final approval, and don't take it as anything but that. So, I would like to have seen, like, a lot, a lot cleaner letter, it's no reflection upon you, it's just what has been presented to me. And it's kind of where I am, but a lot of the concerns I have have been answered.
If I, I have Joe in my ear.
Yes.
The same way. So, we, we, we look at this preliminary approval, and we know that we have conditions that we still need to meet. Predominantly, one of those conditions is to comply with the review letters of the consultants. So, any of the items that are contained within these, these letters now, we are taking on an obligation to work to comply with them and resolve them. So, it doesn't relieve us of our obligation to continue to perform and continue to work with them. And in fact, this approval doesn't give us any right towards a final plan approval, and it doesn't give us any right to the recording of approval. So, I think that if it's any consolation to what you just said, this does have an impact.
Absolutely.
But it's still, we, we are, we, the applicant, are still on the hook, per se, to perform under any of the conditions or the contingencies that are contained within. So, the leverage still is, quite frankly, in the township's hands for the better part.
Yeah. That's the importance of a thorough resolution. That's why the process, we even held ourselves to a resolution in our own police station, so.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that. We, so we will take, obviously, the, the normal conditions where we referenced. We, so we will take, obviously, the, the normal conditions, where we reference the waivers, the outstanding review comments, but as you know, a lot of times what we do is take even things that are in those letters and make sure that they're spelled out really clearly in the conditions, sort of belt and suspender, to make sure that you guys know that these things are being addressed, and it's spelled out, not just called out in review letters. So, we'll take as many of those things that we feel like needs to be sort of mirrored in that resolution and make sure it's clear, because I think the point that Joe would make is that the appeal, if there were to be one, is taken from the preliminary approval. So spelling this all out in the preliminary approval resolution is the best way to sort of insulate us from that.
And Peter, if you recall, the school district one was a very detailed resolution that we did, because we, we were concerned about, just what you were concerned about.
The, the fast-track timing on that was-
We will make, we'll make them, that resolution very detailed.
And the resolution prepared by the township, sent to the applicant, so there's no misunderstanding, and that everybody knows what they're headed into.
Very good.
And I did want to bring up a subject that, because of the appeal of the sewer sale, we are still going to continue to have in the resolutions that the tapping fee will be due until we get that straightened out, that, because this is a very, very remote possibility that the, the system would come back to us.
Yeah.
But if it did, we would want, you know, those tapping fees would have to have been paid or be paid. So I, we can work with you on how we draft that language, but we want it, we're letting people be aware of that.
Yep, fully understand, and I would say our interests are aligned.
That's only if, in the future, the sewer plant is overruled.
Right.
Which, yeah, all right.
It's so remote, but, yeah.
In, in the event of, understood.
Then I think we, we just have really one other kind of condition to, to talk about on the open space and recreation?
Yes. And for, for anybody in the room, I, we as the applicant, we've been working very closely with the township to try and understand what its goals are, particularly as it pertains to park and rec space, open space. When we did our declaration to protect the open space that we have there now, we had many conversations about how to get the trail connection done and all these other things. It is important to us as an organization. It has been important to us. We've participated in this type of thing in the past, independent of anything related to this project. So, initially, you know, we had done our math and calculations, which we felt that we were getting close to providing some of the, you know, some of the park space and open space, but we had made a, we made an offer of approximately $250,000 towards the park, park and rec space. You know, we reflected on it, you know, and I think really, a lot of this comes from working with the township to better understand how we can maybe do a little bit better with it. So we were, you know, thinking we could put together a package that made a little bit more sense. So if we had an initial $250,000 park and rec fee, then gives the town, then an opportunity to do an additional amount, perhaps in the form of, as we pull building, a building permit. So, we would do something in the form of, perhaps, we had originally proposed about $1,000 a unit. So as we pull building permits, the township would be able to then continue to bring in fees as it starts to and continues to make plans. I know this has been, you know, that's something that's been important to the township at this point, so, love to get some reaction as it relates to what, what we just... So, $250,000, and then an additional $1,000 per unit as building permits are pulled.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, did we have any minimums in there, Zach? Just to, in the event you're, in the event that 280 units suddenly dissolve to some other number, do we have a minimum?
Well, it'd be, so if they're doing it by, I think the idea was upfront, sort of some ability for us to perceive as some projects that we have-
Right.
-in the works, and then for any building permit they pulled up to pay, so if they're able to, through the final plan review process, they don't lose any units, that would ultimately be 280 units, so $280,000.
Two hundred and eighty.
If they were to lose some units, there, which I doubt, I doubt it would be a large amount, if any, at this point, they would just pay on whether they were the, so in this case, there would be no-
Right.
-minimum baked in, but...
So if 280 units were to be built, then we're looking at 530 would be a, would be a number, right?
Math is correct.
Spread out over a period of time. I think that's a generous, fair offer that can help us with a number of our park and rec projects going forward. Steve, I mean, Steve and I spend a few nights a week on park and rec, and I, I think, I think that would be welcomed.
Well received.
Yeah.
A few nights a week? Wow. You should get more than that. Kidding, kidding, kidding.
Do, do I hear 350? No, I think, Jason, I think that's a reasonable offer. Appreciate it. You know, one of the things that, one of the things that we're trying to do here is, as, as properties unwind, we have to kind of create parks and improve parks that exist here, so this will help go a long way to, to do that, so appreciate it.
Will the tree company still be operating out of the property after a closing? I wouldn't think so.
Well, the tree company's gonna, is, gonna be done.
I thought, I would think so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, and if I had, you know, if I had a vote for where some of the money went, I'd say friends of Summer Stage a little bit, see some more concerts, but that's, so, but we're happy that you've, well received, so.
Yeah, I think the other thing, aside from the fee which we just discussed, the trails, and some of the other things that are discussed in the ordinance and on, shown on the plan, I know, Jason, you've been working to try to figure out a way to give the township an ability, if it were to pursue it in the future, to, to utilize the current driving range for township purposes. Is that still something you think is a possibility?
I, I, I do. So to, to add to, to that, I think one of the important things we can do is create a right of first refusal for the property, for the township, so that it gives the township an opportunity to make plans around it, it's funded to do something with it, and at such time, it, you know, if and when the, you know, the driving range would cease stop, cease operations, I know, I've been told on countless occasions, "I heard you're getting rid of our driving range." It's not me. No, I'm not, we're not, we're not. So I know there's, you know, people are a fan of that, and I think there's, as we've all talked in the past, there's a lot of other opportunities for that, for that piece. It's no big secret, I always wanted to see it turned into soccer fields, but it's not a today thing, so I think that would give the, that would give the township an opportunity to have some level of control over it, what happens in the future.
Right. And, and an area just to nail down is, is that we're, we're talking a potential lease and/or purchase with a dollar, a dollar a lease for 29 years?
Yeah, what it would, we would keep it kind of flexible, because we don't know when it's going to stop operating as a driving range. Could be 10 years from now, could be 20, the laws change during that time, so we wanted to kind of keep it a little open-ended.
I was going to suggest the same thing, so I think there's a way to put the mechanics and the construct around it, because as you said, with laws that change year to year and every decade, you know, you have different ways to do it, so I think that would be the best way, and I'd look to Bernadette to, for input on that.
Sure.
Yep.
And Bernadette, and just, we were talking also about maybe adjusting the restricted covenant-
Yeah, the voluntary-
-that would allow, that would allow the township a little bit more flexibility of, of a passive recreation, potentially.
And, and Jason, it might be just a little bit, just pulling up, pulling up the voluntary declaration, tweaking of a little bit of the language in there.
Amendment to that.
Okay.
Yep. So I would do-
So, so, you know, potentially, the driving range, it could be potentially then become soccer fields, baseball fields, cricket fields, whatever.
But we wanted to let the members of the audience know, it's still, the, under the voluntary declaration, it's that, that acreage is restricted in perpetuity, so it really would only be able to be used currently now for the driving range, or something would become open space or something the township would want to do. It, it's not meant to be a, something else that another developer would do.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Not intended to be developed.
It is still not intended to be developed.
Right.
Correct.
The driving range, a field, a playfield, ballfield-
Or just play open space.
Or just a, nice view.
And I think that sounds pretty good, and I think we've kind of fine-tuned. Peter, any thoughts, anything else?
My questions have been answered.
Okay.
And, and if, at any time, when we start to do this next submission, if there are any of those questions, we're more than happy to sit down, answer any of those things, walk folks through plans. I will tell you, the consultants do a very thorough job at checking each box and every detail on what it is that we're providing them, so a lot of this stuff can be, can be spoken to. I think Chris explained the traffic stuff, they're, they're deep into it, so, but we're more than happy to make the time to do that.
I just want, I just want to hear we have a good road. That's what I want to hear.
A reliable road.
A reliable road.
280 each quarter, about one per road.
That's right.
I, I, I will tell you, and I don't want to, I don't open a can of worms, but we have done more truck turning radiuses out here than you can possibly imagine, so we know every different type of truck and what kind of turn it can make.
I will offer- All right, I'll make a motion to authorize solicitor to draft a resolution for LD 13 2021 for preliminary subdivision and land development, application for Knickerbocker redevelopment, subject to all the usual conditions, review letters, lease, et cetera, anything represented at the meeting tonight.
Yes. I wanted to ask, I saw that already out there.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Before, before we vote on it, are there any questions from-
Discussion.
-our astute audience?
Which also might be another condition.
They are in the condition.
Good evening. As you know, I had submitted a number of comments in regard to preliminary plan that you're considering, that's July 1st submission. I'd like to say that the conditions I submitted, I believe Bernadette, you received like 10 conditions that I submitted to the township, were based on the July 1 submission on a standalone basis. By that I mean that Jason just mentioned that already, Arm, is going to submit, final submission. I'd like to add that Jason and I and our staff, particularly Dan McKenna, have been working very hard to resolve some of those comments, and I believe the final submission should address those and resolve those comments, what I'm calling conditions. However, my only concern is that when you draft this resolution from the preliminary, I have to protect my position and look at it from the standpoint that my comments still stand, because they pertain to the July 1 submission. I can't assume that everything is already taken care of in the final submission with Jason is prepared to submit tomorrow. Explain to me that? Yeah, so, again, there's no reflection on, on Jason and his team, they, we've been working very good and well together, and I suspect that the final plan will address my comments. But again, I don't know how you want to address or handle the comments I submitted, because they pertain to the preliminary.
Is it currently the belief that any requested conditions or concerns mentioned already were not handled in the just July 1 set of plans that you referred to?
Well, yes. I understand your question. For example, the rights of way along Mill Lane, for example, were not addressed in the preliminary, they were incorrect. There were concerns about the sewer, the new water line that's going to be brought off of Lap Road, down Mill Lane, and down the service road. That was, there was a serious question on my part about, they were laid out along my property within the 16 and a half foot right-of-way, opposed to the west side of Mill Lane, which has a 30-foot right-of-way and is flat, with a few environmental considerations had taken. So I could go down a list of those things, the concerns that I brought up, that were not addressed in the July 1 submission. But, again, working with Jason, and he shared with me a number of the engineering sheets for his final submission, they will be addressed.
Bernadette, could we just add into, into the preliminary, that the conditions that are, are mentioned in the July 1 letter will be, will be addressed?
I think, Jason, did you receive a copy of this?
Actually, I did, I did receive a copy of it, and one thing I've, Marty's very thorough, and I respect him for that, so he did provide that to me, just to say, "Hey, I'm just documenting." We have provided him the, the changes that reflect his concerns and his conditions. So, for example, the water line, we have already, for our new submission, moved it to the western portion of Mill Lane.
Yep.
Right, that was, and that was a major, that was a major issue in, for Marty in the previous, in the previous set. So that's been moved for the final, which was a request Marty made based on that July 1 submission, so.
So, i-if we were, there is one through 10 on the email, it was, it's a pretty recent one.
I'm, I'm comfortable accepting that as a contingent.
Okay.
Yes. We've been able, we've been able to resolve those items.
Except, I think, Zach, you had a question on number one.
Yeah, just, just number one, and I know we've talked about this in the, some of the technical meetings, and, you know, Marty, you and I have talked about it. Number one is related to the 16 and a half foot legal right-of-way along the east side of Mill Lane. It seems that that is coming from some concept plans, but isn't, like, legal right-of-way that's already reflected? Do you, do you want to speak to that at all, Jason?
Well, I, I, I think we, I think we, and I, I don't want to speak for you, Marty, we've provided some different information back and forth, so we just want to make sure that we're preserving what the legal right-of-way is. We are not on the legal right-of-way that is on Marty's portion of the property, so we're really focused on the legal right-of-way that we're representing that is on the western portion of the property. So, this was something, and Marty, perhaps you want to weigh in on that a little bit, but to make that particular thing, condition.
I mean, I think we could draft the condition appropriately, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not going to just copy and paste this list, and we'll have to do some wordsmithing and all that, so I think we can appropriately reflect that. I understand the issue, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted-
Yeah.
-relative to this list.
And, and opportunity to draft it as such, because you're, effectively, you're, effectively, you're authorizing to draft the conditions, so I think that there's some drafting that can be done on that first one that still needs to be resolved. So, in your process of drafting it after tonight, that that can be resolved, because I do believe it is and will be.
As between the two.
As between the two of us, and making sure that it's, it's worded properly. Yep.
I'll be with him, though. Apparently, wordsmithing your-
Yeah, at least on that.
Hearing none? Then I, I guess, we're, the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around. Thanks for sticking around. Okay. Moving on, Zach, we've got an extension of time.
Yes. So we've been working with the Fetter's Mill Community Association on their conditional use application. They have requested an extension to the October 12 meeting to open the hearing. So this has been on the agenda the last two months, I think. So we'll continue to work with them and look to schedule the hearing. Actually, I just want to note that we may have a procedural item there, so I'll follow up with them. Because we have to advertise that 30 days in advance. We didn't open a hearing and continue it, so.
It's a conditional use. I just have to do it just like a zoning hearing.
Oh, right. And it's been to the planning commission. All right. So I think we can we can work around that. So we'll target the October 12 meeting for that.
Okay. So I guess we'll try to do a motion for the extension. Peter, on 7C.
Yep. I would like to make a motion to extend time to render a decision following on Fetter's Mill Community Association to until October 12 to open the hearing.
Rich, why a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And extension granted. Guess we're going to release a little cash.
Release a little cash. So this was just an interim agreement we set up with the school district so that they could get started on some over the summer improvements, primarily the grading, the stormwater basins to parking lots that could get open for school this year. We've since got the full agreement, which is, you know, 10 times that for financial security for all the site improvements. So we are in a position where we could release this, but we wanted to get board authorization since it's technically a final release.
Makes sense. All right, I'll. How did they post their new security? Did they just post it cash? Or they give a letter of credit to curious?
It's sort of a set aside tri-party arrangement with with a bank.
Wow, okay.
So we're like kind of a named accountant on some set aside money.
All right, great. That'll work. Okay, make a motion to release authorize releasing the interim financial security of 514,000 and change for Great Valley School District for that fifth, sixth grade center.
I'll second that.
Long day.
Aye.
Aye.
And passes.
How's the construction going? Is person Dallas on schedule?
I believe it's mostly on schedule. They have hit a few bumps along the way, and they've they've tried to work through them. They've been in regular contact with Al to try to sort through things. Had to adjust their bus circulation loop. They had some interaction with the pipelines. So there's there's been a couple of things along the way, but I think they're doing they're moving along.
They they just raised the house that existed
Yeah, I saw.
on 348.
They couldn't wait it.
Opening is September 24.
I believe it's, yeah, for the 24 school year. So they still got a lot of work to do. They did. This is just an aside. They did take down the wings on the existing, like historic building.
Yeah.
And they found some documents in the wall, which they provided to us. We just cracked that open. We didn't get a taint to look, but it was nice that they provided sort of a time capsule.
No money, just pay.
It was 1956 newspapers. Was it 56 or 46 or something?
Yeah, well, luckily it wasn't money because it was mostly falling apart when we opened it. So we thought we'd best maybe not dig through it before the historic commission got a chance to take a look.
I know you probably noticed. Has a decision been made where the new voting areas want to be for precincts, I think, 1 and 2?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I don't think their current offices.
There was a discussion about trying to figure out where to go. I know there was a number of places pointed out, but I haven't heard what a final is. Yeah. And Bernadette and Zach, land use and zoning process, 7E.
Yeah. So this is more of just like kind of a check in, I guess you'd say. You know, we we continue to see a lot of strong development interest throughout the township, particularly along Route 30 for apartments. You know, our response the last couple of months has been that we want to take a comprehensive viewpoint on this and be methodical about it, not just kind of work at this one property at a time. But in the meantime, we've continued to see receive proposals for mostly for apartments. We get a little project updates and nudges from the developers looking to move forward. So, you know, so far, we've we've focused primarily on Route 30. I think our intent is to kind of get back on that here and schedule another workshop. But we've also begun to receive some interest in the corporate center. So I'm looking to build an apartment on a sort of an underutilized property. So we're kind of getting to the point where we've got this Route 30 focus area. You know, as those that process has drug on, people are starting to get bites on additional types of uses. So it seems like people only want to build apartments or maybe build. We still get interest for contractor offices and things like that, car dealerships, auto repair. And that is like on Route 30, that's about all we're hearing at this point. So we've kind of got this Route 30 focus area. Now the corporate center, I think, is going to take some thinking because we keep hearing that, you know, the office market is very challenging at this point. Nobody's building new. Nobody's getting long-term leases for big offices. It's mostly smaller stuff. So I think at the staff level, we're kind of, as much as we had tried to focus on 30 and probably need to reconfigure that a little bit, our approach to that, we've now got the corporate center. And we had been planning to move forward with sort of our, I'll say, our comprehensive zoning rewrite where we would hire a consultant. So we've kind of got three initiatives that, you know, if you ask the developers, would work very quickly all at once, and it would all just dovetail nicely in the next three months, which is just not going to happen. So I think what we're looking for from the board maybe is just some insights on how you prefer we go about this. I think each is important in its own right. Each probably could work on a different timeline, but we just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with how we're going about it and maybe just talk about your openness to if we are to have workshops, if you're open to daytime versus nighttime. So just wanted to kind of get that all out there and get some feedback.
Yeah, I I think I think it would be a continuation of the of the beginning of the summer meeting that we had.
Right.
And to bring in Kametta and to talk and to expand the the options that he could potentially talk with in terms of Route 30. I mean, this this new situation on 29 is new. Let's let's take one step at a time, I think, and try to focus on 30 right now.
Has he been made aware of the interest in the corporate zone yet, Tom? Give him his thoughts.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him specifically about the more recent proposal we got.
The tall one?
Yeah. So we have that. And then obviously, there's the zoning changes that were done a few years ago around like on the west side of 29 and Great Valley Parkway. That's a an approved zoning district. They are looking to move forward with some multifamily as part of their phase one. So.
Sorry, is that?
It is.
I'm looking for it, so.
It is. And I guess the the point there is that we've got people wanting to do apartments all over the place. We've we know we've got, let's say, a couple hundred units that are essentially by right there. Down the road, we've got a couple recently that were built. So there's it's not just Route 30, I guess, is the point. We need to start looking at how we.
Every place has frozen comps. It's already a frozen count. The corporate center, we got empty buildings. And the infrastructure is there because 202 and Sweetford, everything. Is it better there? I don't know. Frozen comps. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the conundrum, right? So I guess our we wanted to make sure, I guess, first of all, is the board even open to entertaining proposals like that in the corporate center? Okay. And then also, how much do we want to work those processes together? Again, we want to make sure we're not getting 2,000 or 3,000 apartment units over the next five years. But, you know, I don't know that it would be that. But clearly, there's there's some level of concern of overbuilding apartments, even if we were just doing it on Route 30. When you enter, when you add in this whole other area of the township, it gets challenging to pick the right places and not overbuild it, given the size of that district.
Well, you know, if 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 we could get Toll Brothers to answer the question that I raised, in terms of what what's the saturation point for the number of units that do they see in East White Land Township, maybe that could be helpful, too. But we didn't get an answer from them on that question. Maybe they can get back to us with a with an answer. But in the meantime, I'd like to tackle Route 30 and just keep in mind of what's being talked about for 29. And and let's get let's get moving here a little bit. We've got to get moving and make some decisions. So I'd say, why don't we try to get together and and see what our schedule looks like to try to end up having a another public meeting about 30 and the different options that might exist and have Kametta join us? And anyone else that wants to kind of talk about things?
Daytime would be nice.
Daytime, daytime would be fine, you know.
We can keep the meeting to 10 minutes.
Does that mean I'm not allowed to talk, I guess?
Yeah, you're not allowed to talk. So we'll we'll put our heads together, come up with some maybe some dates and then give it to you.
And when's what's our budgeting schedule coming up to?
I was just going to say. Right.
If I if I may, I think just observing the first two Route 30 meetings, I think they were pretty mildly attended. So maybe doing something during the day, but also bring ABT and possibly record it for the folks that can't. Scott, I think that's your idea.
Sure.
So for folks that haven't seen it or can't see it.
Can't be here during the day. They can view it at night, yeah.
I can, similar to the 10-minute curfew, I can do that budget in five minutes. So we're probably going to do two budget sessions, one the third week in October and one the fourth week in October. That's generally what we that's what we did last year.
Right. And then we get into the holidays.
Right.
It's just Labor Day.
So we can certainly work around the budget workshops. I just wanted to see if that was something you guys were open to, just because so many moving pieces to it. There's limited time at these meetings. So we just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of kind of the moving pieces, like I said.
But I'll let let Tom Kametta do some additional work that he did for Route 30 for the other areas, corporate center, or have a look at that or not yet.
I think so. If you guys are open to it, I think he's a good person to to weigh in.
If he's got the time, why not? Like, you know, we can.
I'm sure he'll make time as long as we pay him.
That's how it works.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's helpful. All righty. Zach, you're you're still up. I guess I kind of am. Zoning code enforcement. Yeah, John Mateus here. John, do you want to speak to this last this next one?
I'll make it. I'll make it very quick. On the first on the first application that we talked about, if the board wanted to decide if they wanted to oppose it or not for 14 Lancaster and the use of the storage base. Midnight last night, I received a packet of information we've been requesting since the question came up last month. It didn't address any of the concerns that we had. I told their attorney that it didn't address the concerns that we have and gave her the option of asking for a continuance to address the concerns that staff had, or we'll go on with the hearing with possible opposition by the township on September 26. They're taking an old roadbed. And in testimony, the or as we had a meeting with Mr. Salamoni on their property, he testified to me that he was going to extend the property, install more impervious surface, put extensive safety lighting up. And the letter that she addressed to me did not go as far as he did. So it was like, you know, you gave me your client gave me one answer, you gave me another. That don't answer our questions. So we left it at that. And I didn't hear back from her. So.
You did, did.
I didn't hear back from her after that. I had told her I had told her what's what? I told her Assistant Anthony that, you know, we would agree to extend a hearing. He would not have to readvertise or resend it to be a continued hearing. We'd open it and just continue the hearing. So I didn't hear back from him. I told her the answers we had on her on her questions, and she didn't get back to me on that.
I I did see, John, that she it was it's Dottie, right? Who Anthony is the attorney we've been dealing with. And then Dottie must be the attorney, the partner, he must be the associate.
Yes, he's her associate, yes.
Yeah. And she she had emailed kind of late in the day at 1:45. But that she says, please note that I'll be out of town the week of October 24th, which I think is when the.
And I responded to that one also. And I told her the option would be then asking for a continuance for a later for a later meeting.
Okay.
I believe I'm in opposition. I would like to send Bernadette.
I'm sorry, Peter.
I'm sorry. Let me speak more clear. I think this just smells bad. I would like to send Bernadette in opposition to the ZHB meeting if they do.
Well, based on based on what I just heard from from John here, on 70 Lancaster, they want to put lights up for 24/7. I'm not I'm opposed to that as well. So I mean, I was hoping to to get more specific information. If we're not, if need be, then I'm I'm agreeing with you to send Bernadette to oppose it.
As it stands right now, they have indicated they will appear for that we don't know.
We don't know.
Okay, we don't know.
They left it open. They left it open at the end of the date.
Some direction in case they do appear for hearing, right? Okay.
I'll stay in contact with Bernadette. I'll know when we get whatever they decide to do. Answer our questions or not.
Can they actually move forward? I'm sorry, Rich. Can they actually move forward and go to these meetings without providing sufficient information? I mean.
Well, that would, yeah, they can go forward. It's an application under the MPC. A hearing has to be held within 60 days. If they refuse to give an extension, yeah, they can go forward. But we're going to be there opposing it. So it's it's not a benefit to their client for for them to go forward.
And they're going to have to have more detailed plans for the hearing itself. It's not uncommon to not get that stuff beforehand.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, please keep us in the.
Depending on how controversial it is. Yeah, usually when we ask for it, we get it. Right?
And on the second item on the agenda that was for me, I received no decision from the solicitor today. So I have none to but none to her. I'll present to you.
Please keep us in the loop about the whether they're showing up or not.
Thanks, John. So I guess we we need to officially run a motion opposing this and sending Bernadette to the planning zoning.
I'd like I'd like to make a motion to send Bernadette Kearney to the zoning hearing board meeting in opposition to, I'm sorry, the application of 70-72 Lancaster Pike Irrever Irrevercable Trust at 14 East Lancaster Avenue for use variance from section 200-30 to use the property as a commercial parking lot for short slash long-term parking of vehicles as well as staging and storage of materials and equipment. The property is within the FC zoning district. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passing to send Bernadette.
Right.
And 8B, Zach? Consider action on zoning hearing board decision or?
Yeah, those are the ones John was referring to. We don't have any new decisions. We'll provide them probably for the next month.
Okay. No decisions. That's what John was talking about. Thank you. All right. Donna, can you go to the Zoom screen and and tell us anybody? Any public comments?
Not unless I want to say something, Chris Williams and Zach. No comments.
Sure we're not being ghosted out there?
No, we're the only ones left.
Marty, any questions?
Yeah, there is.
Aw, come on, Marty, will ya? Remember, three minutes.
Oh, geez. Maybe a first. I'd like to revisit the matter of the cure agreement in regard to the U S two, two billboard. I was happy to hear your comments earlier, Scott, that you received a check for the one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, good sign. There was another condition of that cure agreement, dealt with the applicant, the sign owner submitting a, some type of remediation plan for the damage that was done, have we received that?
Yes, we've got, we, Mark Moses and, I don't know, Al, are you involved with that too? And Bernadette, yeah, there's a number of, of the other provisions that need to be cured as well. They're working through them, a lot of landscaping, trees, shoring up the slope that are being discussed and worked through with our arborists and, and our experts. So they are being, they are being looked at, and they're being addressed.
Okay. Have they been authorized to start work? Any of that?
On the two oh two, no.
Yeah, so they've, they've done the erosion control, the matting and all those types of things, that's been completed. They do have some other permit conditions that we need to work through, like some of the landscaping that was proposed. They are not authorized to turn on the sign yet, if that was, if that's what you're asking. They won't be allowed to do that until they get all of their final inspections. What we need to work through now is some of these other things like they agreed to regarding landscaping, how that impacts their ability to actually finalize and close out their permit and turn on the sign, so this is all sort of brand-new things that came to our attention the last week or so, that we just want to make sure we're looking at comprehensively.
You know, it's obvious, going back to the public hearing, residents asked a number of questions in regard to the owner of that sign, or whether he had to remove vegetation, was he going to violate or disturb the steep slopes, et cetera. And obviously, you know what the answers were, the no, no, no. But even now, I think it's obvious to a number of residents, if you drive down two oh two, that sign is not clearly visible. The, the question comes up, what's, what next, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's a good point, and, and actually, way back when, Rich pointed that out on, on one of his drives down, and we're all aware of that site line going, going north on two oh two, you don't see that iPad sign until the very last second, and there's that beautiful sycamore or two that exists in the visual site.
That's what I'm leading up to, Scott.
Trying to add something to, to, to what the lease was is something that we can't do right now, correct?
Yeah, it would, it would be diff...
Well, that area is clearly within the PENDOT right of way. They already violated that. Is the PENDOT Notice of Intent to Terminate Letter resolved with PENDOT, do we know?
Yeah.
It is?
Well, the way it's resolved is they are to pay a fine and put up a bond of ninety-eight thousand, ninety thousand dollars, and, and, and that bond would be utilized if they went ahead and did any additional cutting, and that bond would be used to remove...
The sign.
The sign.
The sign, so...
The sign.
That's where I think that we should put barriers to prevent access, because they're getting that close to two oh two where those trees are, those little yellow things filled with water, and they have to get a truck over there, if they can't get a truck over there, that's where the tree is.
Right. The, well, I mean, you have to be a surveyor almost to determine where the two oh two right of way is versus the township parking.
True.
But what I'm getting at is, it would seem to me that, that board might want to consider at this point, taking some type of photographic baseline, or as-is, as what is there now, which would help you determine in the future, you know, the extent of any future damage, and it might help PENDOT if they, it's on there right of way.
Let me ask Al, do you, are, the gentlemen are out, or the women are out at the site checking on that, could, could they take photos while they're out there?
Yeah, we'd take photos when we're out there, but we all...
So in addition to that, the township has a landscape architect, I believe, you may want to take an inventory of what's there, at least in terms of what would be the logical, where the sightlines would be. Because again, I'm just concerned, you know, it's just so obvious to me anyway, and I've heard comments from other people, can't see the sign, what's next, you know, what's going to happen? I guess I'm just urging, if we can be more proactive in that regard.
Yeah, Marty, one of the things I, I know I've mentioned and we've talked about, and I'm not sure we've, we've got an answer for it, but clearly, the, the lease, the wording says that any tree disturbance going forward, you know, has to have approval from the township. I know, I know the answer. Look what they already did, and they've come to beg forgiveness. How can we prevent that slip-up from occurring on next July third, you know? I don't know, I think, I think we could maybe keep thinking about it, or Bernadette, I mean, what, what, what else can we do to, to make sure that doesn't happen again in the middle of the night? And keep in mind, we also have a potential change of ownership of, of the sign. And one of the things that we're doing, are we, in the letter, we've, we've reached out and we need to be notified of the contact and who those people are, and we would like to begin a relationship and have a discussion with the new owner, so we can discuss these issues going forward, that they're aware of them.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, Outfront is the buyer. I don't think it's closed yet, but they've already replaced the catalyst name with Outfront on, on the, on the billboard. So that's something else we, we are, we are aware of, we're looking at, and, you know, again, thanks for bringing to our attention...
Whatever you can do, I mean, it'd be great.
I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, thanks, thanks to the board and the township for what they have done on this question.
Okay. And, and our final homestretch run, I will run through the consent agenda, as usual. Any questions, let me know.
Absolutely.
Or don't let me know. But here we go. Approve the meeting minutes from August tenth, twenty twenty-two. Ten B, ratify the payments of bills for August twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Accept the treasurer's report as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. D, approve twenty twenty-three minimum municipal obligations, the M M O, for township pension Ratify the P A local government investment trust account for sewer sale proceeds. Ratify the municipal pay account, munisi pay account for park and rec rentals. Approve proposal from Daniels Consulting Engineers for construction drawings for the restroom building at Backton Hill Park in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Scott, excuse me, just the, the next one, there's been a change in the amount of the payment. Instead of what's shown on the agenda, it's been substantially reduced to forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Why?
Al explained it, I believe, this morning, that they will estimate how much work they're going to have done in time for the meeting, just the, I guess, the, the way they do their billings, and in this case, their estimate was not accurate, is that...
We normally get the invoices at the, either the end of the month or the first of the month, and what we've, we always, I send somebody out to verify the quantities that they're invoicing, and we're always finding discrepancies. What I think they're doing is expecting billing for what they expect to have done by the time this meeting occurs. That's what I, I expect, I believe is happening. So we had, we went out there and we quantified exactly what they were invoicing, and we came up with a reduction and relayed that to them.
Good man. So on H, approve the Mecca Bill number seven for the amount, revised amount of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. Okay. Amend the parking agreement with workspace for the movie night parking. I guess next year we're going to do a, an annual, so we don't have to go through this every time, huh?
That's the, that's the plan.
Good plan. All right, approve payment for Buzz Burger for benches in Backton Hill Park Playground for the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Buzz is legendary in the business.
Say that fast. They're, they're legendary?
Buzz, yeah, Buzz has been around for decades.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with them, but that is their name.
Interesting, interesting name.
Scott, the next one is, it should say, approve the grant extensions. We, we've already made the request, and they've provided the contract extensions, we just need to approve and sign them.
All right, again, amended K to read, approve the county grant contract extension for Spring Ridge and Baldur'some Properties. L, approve permission to pursue Traffic Signal Technologies Grant Program. And finally, approve and proclamation of October ninth through fifteen as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in East Whiteland Township. Sounds like a good cause, let's promote that. And with that said, any questions on any of those items further? Meeting adjourned.